This conference will now be recorded.
We will start with Kelly's roll call.
Member of the Baptists?
Here.
Member of the Reverend?
Here.
Vice Chair Reverend.
Here.
Chair Carrie?
Here.
All right, and then members of Barbara, Ray, and Brenner are all listed with notice.
Okay, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'm looking left and right for Terry Brown for public comment. Is there anyone else here that's for public comment? Hearing none, we'll call public comment closed and move on to the review and approval of the minutes. Fellow Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the minutes? And does anyone want to make a motion for approval?
Yes.
Go ahead, Cory.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Secretary 20?
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You can use your microphones, too.
Aye.
Aye.
That brings us to item number two, the quasi judicial hearing for a development plan for 69 Spanish River Drive. The first thing I have to ask is, has anybody had any ex parte communication with the applicant? Any of the applicant's consultants, the architect or builder relative to this project?
No.
No, none?
No.
Thank you. Good. At this time, Kelly, will you swear in the witnesses?
Well, I want to wish you to speak on the item. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you have been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, and Tara is going to join us, and you'll swear in as she runs in the door. Okay, terrific. I think that puts us to you, Cory.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Cory, the Mormon Town Planner. This is a development plan review for a new home at 69 Spanish River Drive. The application includes the demolition of an existing home and construction of a new two-story, single-family home with five bedrooms, five-and-a-half baths, garage, swimming pool, and stock, and covered lanai. This was a home that was approved by the planning and zoning board in 2001. There's a limitation of, I think it's 18 months, on the development plan reviews prior to obtaining a permit. Unfortunately, permit wasn't obtained in sufficient time, and the approval expired. This application, this design, is, with several minor exceptions, identical to the prior approval by this board. The difference, at least from a zoning and planning perspective, is recent additions to the code for requiring articulation and window and door coverage on all four facades of the building, rather than just the front facade. This design complies with all of the prior codes and with the new provisions to the code. The recommendation from staff is for approval, with some conditions that are included in the backup to the staff report, and subject to the board's review under the development plan review requirements, and we're here to answer any questions.
Good. Well, my question isn't a question for you, Cory, but Manny, who's not here, we normally get staff calculations. Has anybody confirmed that the applicant calculations are accurate?
I believe Manny had done that on prior review.
Oh, okay, and they haven't? The footprint hasn't changed?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Then that would really impact, unless they increase the volume of the house or the footprint, these would stay the same.
This home is substantially identical to the prior approval, with the exception of the couple of changes that happened.
All right, thank you. Applicant, would you like to run it through, run through with us what we have here?
Absolutely. Good morning, nice to see everybody again.
Nice to see you.
My name is Richard Bremer. I'm with RWV Laneras Architecture, 3000 North Military Trail, Suite 209, Boca Raton, have been sworn in. I'm here to discuss, single-family, proposed single-family residence at 69 Spanish River Drive. Kelly, if we can go to the survey. It's... There it is, okay. The new home is replacing an existing ranch-style home of approximately 2,622 AC square feet and 3,736 total under roof square, square feet. The existing finished floor of the existing house is at 7.75 NAVD. The new home will be a two-story coastal transitional-style home with five bedrooms, it's actually six-and-a-half baths, with three-car garage, pool, pool deck, nicely-appointed hardscape and landscaping. We go to the architectural site.
Where's the finished floor elevation of the new home, if I could ask?
I'll get to it, it's, yeah.
Okay, we just mentioned the previous.
Yeah. The architectural site plan, which is A1.
I'm not sure what you have in here, so.
Okay, well, yeah.
What's going on?
If you keep going, I think it's going to be in there. Okay, there you go. So, the new proposed home is 4,000, is going to be 4,859 AC square feet and 7,521 overall square feet. It sits on a lot that's 16,144 square feet. It's a corner lot with the rear having an eastern exposure to the waterways, or the water views. The house sits within the required setbacks of 15 to the interior side and 20 to the street side, and 25 to the front and 25 to the rear. The finished floor elevation for this new house is going to be at 10 feet NAVD, which meets the FEMA flood zone requirement. The garage will be at 6 feet NAVD, and the edge of pavement is going to be at, well, it is at 3.8 NAVD with a driveway slope of approximately 5.6%. The pool deck in the rear on the east side is going to be approximately at 9.5 NAVD with steps down to the yard at 7.75 NAVD with additional steps down to the dock area, which is being raised to 5.4, sorry, 5 feet NAVD. The top of the retaining wall, which we talked about last time in our last presentation, on the north side, to the rear, to the easterly portion of the lot, is going to be at 7.5 NAVD and gradually step down as you go towards, towards the front of the house. And that's going to obviously be the same, and it's going to be consistent with the grading on the northern lot, Lot 67, Spanish River Drive. If we could just go to the renderings, if you guys want to look at the renderings. The coastal transitional style elevation is consistent with the architectural coastal styles located in the neighborhood, but bringing a new, fresh coastal character to the existing residential structure. It enhances the existing surrounding structures, structures with familiar massing, neutral colors, simple material and finessration details. The heightened scale is sensitive to the new FEMA height requirements, trying to keep more of a human-scale approach and feel from the street to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors. There will be a circular paved entry drive with paved walk with steps to a raised front porch entry feature. The front of the house at the master bath and garage area will be one-story elements with simple massing and detailing. The raised entry porch and balcony creates a nice sense of scale, I'm sorry, sense of scale and sense of entry. The roof tile will be a Burrell charcoal gray cement tile. There will be finessration details of soffit moldings, brackets, shutters, and head and sill details that have windows and door openings. The rear of the house has an open feel with covered lanai and covered balcony areas facing the water views to the east and to the south over the bridge. There will also be finessration details at the rear and the side to continue the feeling and style of the architecture. Overall, the new proposed home, hardscape and nicely-appointed landscaping, enhances the surrounding, the surrounding architectural streetscape and neighborhood. The home's style and design should be a welcoming addition to the ocean ridge streetscape. Please allow me to answer any architectural questions you have, and then Louis from Majestic Views is here for any hardscape and landscaping questions. Thank you.
And you're prepared to answer landscape questions as well today?
Yes.
Oh, you have your landscape? Okay, good. Not yet, but...
Absolutely.
Didn't recognize you, I apologize. Good. Commissioners, any questions?
This is essentially what was approved previously.
Yes, so the only, the things that were added, the items that were added were on the north side because of the 15% coverage of windows, for windows and doors on all elevations. We had to add windows to the walk-in closet, which is, you know, on the side, there's some... Honestly, I wanted to kind of bring this up because I have other projects that are going to come through with the same... You know, we're trying to create, you know, nice architecture in regards to the ins and outs and keep interest to the all sides, you know, with finessration and so forth. But adding windows for the sake of adding windows, sometimes it just doesn't make sense. For this, it wasn't too bad. It's a smaller walk-in closet. We added, we needed to add two windows to that closet, which, again, sometimes it's really not necessary for that. And then there was another window we needed to add in the stair area, which worked out in regards to where it was located. But there are situations, and on the south side, we had to add a window in the garage, which normally, we kind of put equipment up against a garage wall or so forth, and that, that kind of made us move some equipment around. But, but other than that, it was just minor stuff for this particular project. But for future projects, I think it has to, that portion of the code, I think it's 64, the order is 64.1 and 64, I'm sorry, dash 2, where we have to create that 15% of coverage of window openings or some kind of, you know, openings on the side elevation. And, and to do that, you might have to throw a window in a garage, you might have to increase window space in a bedroom, which might be a bedroom wall or bed wall, which can have some windows there, but it's creating something that I personally think that you're adding more finessration that's really needed in the architecture, just to cover the 15%. So, but my next presentation, I'll actually bring that up to you guys again.
I understand your concern. I think that this house is one that really demonstrates the need to look at all facades of the house. You have the three visible facades in this house. As you come across the bridge, the rear of the house is very visible, too, as you come onto Inlet K. And of course, the south elevation is right there on the corner. My question to you is, is it possible to create the exterior facade with the window in it and in the garage drywall over it and have your solid wall?
Yeah, but, I mean, to me, what's, what's the point of that in regards to function? It's function to the exterior for looks, yeah, I understand that, but it's money to the client, you know? It's, it's something that, you know, just to cover the, your, you know, going by what the ordinance says, you know, putting a window or multiple windows in a closet or a storage room or an elevator shaft, sometimes elevation-wise, you need that because you look at it and it's blank, yes, I understand.
Not, not every developer and architect is as conscientious as you, and we, you are somewhat victim for paying the sins of the past. We were getting flat facades, and sometimes the two-story wall that the neighbor was going to look at had one small window in it. It was, we saw some bad architecture.
I've seen a lot, for sure.
And, so, that doesn't apply to the work I've seen you bring in. But this is an owner-developed project. We get an awful lot of them that are spec builds by developers. And, you know, I understand the economics of it, I was in the development business, but it, we, we have, have to look at these houses as being here for 50 years and impacting the community, so. Yeah, I'm sorry it made it a little more difficult on some projects.
I mean, I understand, it's just, the next project that's going to come through, I just will show you some of the examples of, you know, what I had to do in order to pass the ordinance. But, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's a, it's something that, you know, as architects, we have to, you know, look at it and pay attention to the ordinances and obey what they, you know.
I appreciate you and your clients' attention to detail on this project, and since I live in, on, in Inlet K, I see this house every day.
Yeah, it's going to be nice, nice condition, I'd like to come over to the bridge there.
Yeah.
Rick, we did have to do that at our home. We took, we had a window that we drywalled in.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you don't, and listen, it cost a few extra dollars. It wasn't tremendously over-the-top or anything. It drywalled it in, and it was okay.
Right, it's no big deal. I've done it many times.
Yeah.
I've done it many times. I can, yeah, I mean, there are some times where you just don't see that elevation, even though I try architecturally to try and make all elevations interesting in regards to roofline and massing and so forth. And, but to something, put a window in where no one's going to see it because of the landscaping, your neighbor's not going to see it because of the hedges and so forth. You know, sometimes it's just a little bit too much, but, yeah, we'll, we'll deal with it.
This garage is at a hard corner, though, isn't it?
The, I'm sorry?
The garage is situated at the corner?
It's not on the main drag, it's, it's on the, just as you turn into Spanish River.
The side of the garage is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The north, the south side, the south side of the garage is.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so people are going to see it.
Definitely.
Yeah, that, I don't, that, I don't, I don't.
And, so, there was a project years ago I was involved with, which was on the pares of Fifth and Sixth Avenue in Delray Beach, where you couldn't get a back and a front, you know? You had to have two fronts. So, they're all faux windows on the Publix.
Right.
On the Sixth Avenue side, or Fifth Avenue side of that street, for that very reason.
Right.
Yeah, it's okay. It's, it's still good.
For sure, I mean, the next project that I bring in, just at front elevation-wise, I have a few faux windows that I'm putting in just for the sake of the elevation.
And given the scope of the budget of this, do you think drywalling M1 windows is going to be that expensive?
I don't know.
I didn't think so, okay.
Yeah, it needs more closet space to drywall it.
Right.
Any questions about the landscape planner for the landscape architect?
Looks, looks healthy.
Yeah. Yeah. Tara, maybe we'll let Tara step forward now. Thank you, thank you for your, your presentation. We need to swear you in, Tara.
Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. Do you have some questions?
Please step forward. Do you want to give your report or just answer questions?
Answer questions? I mean, this is a, went through again, so I compared it and everything was.
I'll start off, and this is not a question relative to the applicant, but a question relative to the town, and you've probably heard me say it again. This really points out how much of what appears to be an owner's yard is really town property that wraps around here.
Yes.
The swale of six inches, if that's what we've been doing, they seem to disappear when the, over a couple of years from the time the project's in. What are you seeing in other towns that have similar situations? They're non-curved and gutter, and what are they doing for swales? Is six inches the standard, or it doesn't seem like much when I look at it?
Um, yeah, I mean, six inches in the grass, it's hard, it can be hard to see it. I understand, like, it's kind of going away after years of mowing and whatnot. But, yeah, it's the standard. The thing is, unless you start putting deeper swales, you're going to need pipes under your driveway. Like, you can't go down that far in your driveway because you're going to be, you know, bottoming out and everything. So, yeah, if we wanted to, like, in the driveway, like Coconut Road has, or Coconut Lane has that just because they were so low. If you ever go down there, it's like a totally different cross-section. They have the sidewalk and the pipes under the road, under the driveway. So, I think I said this last time, I think it's more about, like, code enforcement, and if this swale is starting to disappear, then we should probably do something about it.
Yeah. We, we have drainage issues in this town, and we have drainage issues on Inlet K. And, you know, I, I see when a new project comes in, I want to make sure that we're not contributing to the drainage issues, but we're helping to relieve them.
Right.
And, you know, that's what comes to mind here. There's a lot of property here that is town property that could be helping relieve drainage issues.
There's a catch basin right there in the corner, right?
Yeah.
Does that go into the intercoastal?
Yes. I mean, not, I don't know if that one per se, but they're all connected.
They all go the intercoastal, and when the tides are high, they have a hard time draining.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, we're just really low here, so.
And this is the high part of, of Inlet K. You know, he's, they're at six at the, at the garage, so I imagine the street there's five, maybe? At 3.8? At this place, the street is down to, you know, zero.
Yeah.
You know, and so, yeah, it's a...
This is a hard part of town.
Yeah, this, this is something that we as a town need you as our engineer to keep trying to... This is the cheap way to get drainage, is to get, is to, you know, ask him to add, you know, a deeper swale or whatever thing. Make sure, you know, we do it when, when we're doing the project. The town comes in and re-engineers, and it's thousands and thousands of dollars, so.
Yeah, it might be good to look at it, like, in a capital improvement sense, or look at codes, we may talk about it at the workshop.
Cory, you're in North Palm Beach. Do you know how deep their swales are?
It probably started out a lot deeper than they are now, but I would say that it does vary depending on the location, but I wouldn't think they're more than six inches at the most.
My, my son lives there, and the swales, they have a sidewalk with the swale between the sidewalk and the street, and it seems to work pretty good there. They're at a little higher elevation, but...
Most places do. There are some isolated areas of flooding during heavy rain events, but most places work pretty well, I think.
The drainage issues aren't going to go away?
No.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm looking at the Enviro Design exfiltration trench. Where, where is this in the plan? So, if you refer to engineering plans for actual specifications, it's appropriated pipe and gravel.
Right, right, if you go, you, if you go to sheet one or five for Enviro Design.
What is it?
Yeah.
Oh, 105? 105?
105.
105. Can we, can we just put it up? Maybe I'll get a better idea. Sorry, I don't...
I'm finding 1.5.
Yeah, I don't see a 1.05.
It's, it's like the fourth or fifth one, 617 one, 105.
Okay, one, it's, it says 105.
It's after, after the irrigation.
I see it.
Okay, before the, they don't want to see the plan.
Okay. I can see it.
So, the driveway, you see the driveway? So, there's two inlets right there. The one closest to the house, it's in like the middle of the driveway. And then if you look to your right, there's an inlet over there. So, that, that circular or rectangular shape with the hatches under the driveway? Right? Nope, because I'm looking at it.
Southmost.
Or there is one there, too. Okay, so, yeah, under the right drive of the circular drive, there's that rectangular section with the hatches in between the big two brown dots that are the inlets. That is an exfiltration trench. And then, if you look on the, what fronts, in like K Drive, in like the, the side rear, there are more inlets, and then that big rectangular with the hatches as well.
Is there county code to all this? Is there, is this your city code or is there county code as well to this?
We just go by city code. We ask for the first inch of runoff of the, the area.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's another one on the other side of the house.
Yeah.
In the rear. Are you seeing it? I can...
Yeah, I see it.
Yes, it all. STM storm, right, storm.
Yeah, so what happens to it when it's in there? Does it, does it percolate to the intercoastal?
Those are open pipes, they're perforated.
Right.
So, the water goes into the inlet, and then it goes through the pipes, and it goes out the pipes into the rock. That's around it from the detail, you see the rock in the detail.
Yeah.
So, that goes into the ground. So, depending on where you are, you can be above the groundwater table, but sometimes you're like at the groundwater table. But they're designed for that, that they can go up and dissipates faster than just trying to get it off site.
Tara, I'm, recall that we are not allowed to discharge additional into the intercoastal from... So, we can't add more pipes to do discharge here in, is that correct?
That's not completely correct. We can add outfalls, but whenever we did this a long time ago, we just add an outfall. Right now, if you, if you permit like southward, they're going to, they're going to want you to have, like, treatment. So, if that's in the swale or the sink underground, you can put, like, big tanks, like, there's different ways to do treatment. So, nowadays, if we were going to add another outfall, are you sure we'd have to do pre-treatment before it goes into the canal?
And that's to get hazardous materials filtered out?
I mean, you know, oils, like, just anything that's on the road, you know? Mostly, you know, oils. You know, oils, like just anything that's on the road, you know, mostly oils, litter, whatever. You know, gets in our sewer system.
Any other questions?
No, but for the workshop, is this a topic?
Well, I think the topics, the agenda's set, so if you can kind of sweep, sneak it in under one of the headings that they've set, is that?
This seems to be like the most common item that comes up.
It's drainage.
Drainage.
Drainage, yeah. I think we put drainage on the agenda, right?
Only at the draft. Drainage issues, swales, developing a master drainage plan was one of the topics.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
I actually warned you that I don't anticipate us being able to get through all of the topics on the agenda as there are currently 16 topics and none of them are just simple topics.
What, what number is drainage?
Drainage is number seven.
See, what I think you try to do in a workshop, just like, is get consensus around the priorities and a mandate from the commission that planning and zoning can work on some of these things. Because we're right, we're kind of like a work group for the commission and, uh, but we can't just pick our own items that we think are important because they take staff time, consultant time. So you have to have the commission bought in. But I would suggest limiting the discussions and just get the mandate. You know, say, uh, we, we think we should be working on a master drainage plan. Do, do we have your okay to go ahead with that? Check off, go to the next item. You get through the 16 items a lot, a lot better that way.
The first four items are carryovers from last year, so I think they will be relatively quick to get through. And just say, yes, we're gonna keep, or no, we're not gonna keep focusing. It's not top priority anymore.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the way to do it. Kelly, can you swear in Manny so I can ask him a question?
Do you swear or plan to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth?
Manny, I don't even think you have to come for it. You can. Kelly likes it because it's on her recording. The data calculations, normally we see your hand calculations on here too. Is this unchanged from before? Is that the reason why?
And, um, it is the reason, but I, I usually do, and I apologize, I usually just follow up again on the checking on that. But at this point, that's my recollection. It didn't change.
Okay, so, and applicant, have you changed these since the last time? Thank you. Now you can go get back in track. Thank you. Any further discussion, any questions for staff or, or, or the applicant?
I just saw a comment that there was to the generator placed on the property that wasn't on the first plan, but I do see it on this planet. I believe you, you're, you've approved it.
Yes, sir. The, the only comment that we had was that there was a conflicting note on the landscape plan, just to correct the, the landscape comment.
Okay.
But yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to.
No, we have to ask for members of the public. Does any member of the public have a, uh, a comment that they'd like to make? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Now, you may.
Make a motion to approve the development plan for six nine Spanish River Drive with suggested staff conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the job on this. To, uh, I've got a couple of things I want to go over on the, uh, on our time on the agenda. Is anybody else perhaps anything you'd like to state or talk about?
Well, no, I think, you know, we talked about the, you actually mentioned this last, last meeting, you know, we approved, you know, you talked about the drainage, driveways, drainage, swales, increase in seawalls, parking, length of construction as topics. The only thing I would like to say is that the, uh, finally, and thank you, uh, staff for, um, Island Drive South, at least we got a better fencing system up there. So thank you very much. Uh, and with a lot there has been under construction now for two years, three years. I don't know what it is. Still think we need to figure out something, Rick, to, to, as we know here in town, some people can build things very quickly and others that are spec builders, et cetera, are, I think, taking advantage of the situation. Not just, I'm not signaling that spec builders, but there's others as well. And, um, we, it would be really nice if we had something, some way to kind of deal with that. But it looks so much, thank you very much again, staff, because whatever you did, the, uh, the, uh, the contractor has improved the fencing and the, uh, and the screening. Where all, the community feels a lot better about it. So we appreciate that. But we got, I do, I still think that, I don't know if that's on the agenda as well, but certainly we've got to figure out something. I mean, I, in terms of, and we talked, we, we, we've talked about, you know, what, what rights we have, what rights we don't have here, but it just, it's a long time. Two or three years, and it's still sitting as a construction site today. It's, 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 it's better, but it's still a construction site.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I, I note that we now have a requirement for screening of rooftop air conditioners. And I just wondered if they're replaced, is that a requirement?
Uh, Mr. Chair, my understanding was, if I'm correct and wrong, is you can replace life for life as long as it's still screened?
But there are several that are not screened still from prior to whatever. Because I think the property on Adams was built 10 years ago and.
They're like partially screened, aren't they? Kind of like.
Yeah, really.
Two thirds of the way or one.
Yeah, it's really awful.
You see it every day.
Drive down A1A.
Yeah. Really not very attractive.
Without screening and they're changing life for life. They can remain without screening their grandfathered in. But if they're expanding or changing the location, then they would need to screen.
And is it possible to change that grandfathering or is it more of a state law or?
No, you, you can, we can change it. I think we just have to pull it out of sort of the grandfather uses and structures to make it clear that, um, equipment on top of rooftops always needs to be screened regardless of when it was installed. So my recommendation would be, uh, even though the agenda's quite full, it might be something to just bring up and ask for direction from the commission, the town commission, or just forward to have staff work on amendment.
Could I do?
In that case, Mark, you'd have to, you wouldn't want, as, I guess, as each person replaced their conditioning, that would replace the screen. So theoretically, you'd have one new one, one old one, one new one.
Baby steps. That, that, from the day that property was built, that was a mistake. And you see it so much when you go down A1A.
It's not to be that new.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and, and don't think you have to wait for a workshop to go to the commission about something. You know, ask to have amended on their agenda at the end of the, of, uh, any session and say, we as planning and zoning would like to address this. Can we get your approval? And, uh, you know, work with Lynn on that. Uh, but, uh, you know, worse can happen as they say, no, we don't think that's a priority. But, uh, you don't have to wait six months or 12 months to the next planning session to get, get the consent of the commission. And I, Kelly, can you put up from our last applicant, I think it's something worth us three looking at? Sheet A, one point five. I think it was in the slide package I had. It came early in the printed package. It's late. So I'm not, it's a front elevation with the overlay of the existing house. I'll see it. If you just keep going for things that look like elevations. Yeah, should be getting close. There you go. Can you get that so we can see the whole width of the house? Okay, if you see outlined there or on, on your print, that's the existing house roof line on there. We're partly because of the FEMA requirements of, of starting, uh, the zero line higher. We're getting a lot of mass. Fortunately, this is a fairly large lot. It, it's an oversized lot. It had the part of the adjoining lot joined to it at one time. But, uh, these, despite what the architect says, uh, and this is an attractive building, this changes the massing of that corner a lot. And we're seeing this over and over, and it's just something I would suggest as a commission, we try to bear in mind and try to, I think he's done the right things. He's got, uh, his main mass set back. He's got a one-story section there on the left-hand side. But, uh, do, we're seeing this throughout town and it's, it's a part of the economics to tear a house down and put a new house up. You're going to tend to put a bigger house on there. But, uh, there's a lot of massing issues we should bear in mind and try to. I think the most we can do as a commission is to look at articulation and, uh, the way it's viewed from the street and from the neighbors and try to minimize the impact of that. Yeah, if, if he had been at a lower, uh, street elevation here, uh, because he said his was three, three and a half roughly.
Three point eight to the road, but I think five to the old lot. So it's five feet higher from the old lot.
So it's five feet higher. Uh, there's another one built down the street from this that moved it up almost 10 feet. Because now our height of our building starts at that cross line. So they measure the, the maximum height, which they did here, not from where the garage is, but from that line that's midway up on the garage. And sometimes that line is midway up is, uh, you know, that, this is at six, uh, where the garage started. Sometimes the garage, the, the street elevation's down to close to zero in places now. So it's, this FEMA change has been big. Corey can say it's just taking big houses and setting them on a pedestal. And you can see some good examples. I think this will be a good example. And you drive further down the street and there's a house that's a bad example because it just is, there's a lot of mass on, on a lot that's not as big as this.
So what do you do? Change the slope of the roof? Bring it down?
What do you do? That's a question.
I mean, they're building it within, they're building it within the box, right?
They're building it within the box.
And so these are, we've, we've asked all these guys to build it within the box and that's what they're doing. You, you, all the applications I've seen so far for the building it within the box, you're asking to change the box potentially?
No, I'm saying we as, uh, as commissions should be aware that, uh, that design matters. And the box could be good design like this appears to be.
Yes.
Or, or bad design.
Yes.
And, uh, and you have the latitude to criticize, um, you know, bad design.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, you know, you, you use that latitude.
And the good design here is that we have different types of roofs.
Yes.
Positioning, and we also have a lot of windows and decorative stuff to break it up. Is that the idea?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it softens it. It creates a, a stair stepping.
A lot of gabled ins, I guess.
I thought this was low, by the way. When they said the finished floor elevation for the house is 10 feet, I think, is that what we said?
Yeah.
Finished floor.
Yeah, I think that, that felt low. I mean, my house is 12. My garage, I think, is nine. And by the way, I'm, my excess flood insurance is, they're dropping me because it's not 10, 11, whatever the new criteria is coming out for the, you know, these insurance companies are going crazy. I'm like, oh, my gosh, right? And so just because my garage is lower as this is, um, this tends to, I mean, it seemed like they nestled in here, seemed low.
And ten, I think the FEMA standard's really nine. Is that right, Corey?
I think, I think the flood elevation is nine.
And we, we added a foot above to our criteria to make it 10. Is that correct, Tara?
Yeah, it's not nine everywhere, but in a lot of places.
And this garage is six, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's a Florida building code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the alternative, and some lots are big enough to do this, is to, uh, ask or push the garage elevation higher. But then you end up with quite a slope on the driveway.
Driving up.
Yeah, so it's, it's tough. I just wanted to point that out, partly why I'm doing this little, this is that next month will be my last month meeting as a commissioner here. I've served six years now, two terms. I think most of you know I have a summer home in, in North Carolina, and I just don't feel like I can fulfill this role as, uh, on the commission well and not be here year-round. So, uh, I feel like Shields, you will make a strong chair in my absence.
Putting a lot of pressure on everyone now. Thanks for telling, giving us head, head notice.
What month is this?
Yeah, what month is this? You're leaving?
Next month will be the last meeting. Yeah, because the, the commission, the newly elected commission.
Well, you think you only get 30 days' notice?
Yeah. I give Kelly a little more notice. Kelly and Lynn have heard this coming, but, because we, we have actually talked among ourselves, is there a way? We have just struggled with alternates. You're the best, most reliable alternate we've had in years. If, if we had, uh, good alternates that I knew that applicants weren't going to miss, uh, a review and we weren't going to have a short, but, you know, we're one, uh, you know, one of us having a problem today from, away from not being able to have today's meeting. And, uh, so we've had, struggled to have summertime alternates that can be here. If, if we had that, uh, you know, there would be other alternatives, but it's good to get new people.
Maybe consider being an alternate, though.
Yeah, the, the alternates are needed in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be, I, you know, we.
Look at right now.
Look at right now. Help, help us get, help the commission recruit good alternates. That's what I would tell you is that work with the commission. And right now, there's two open seats. You know, I'm confident you will be made a permanent member and I think you'd make, Mark, although you're the most recent ad, your knowledge is, is excellent and would make an excellent vice chairman. And I, at your first meeting of the new, yeah, well.
Well, thanks.
Who else is leaving, Rick?
Well, Dave's already left.
No, I was already left. Do we have any other, any other?
No, those are the two seats that are up. So we, uh, our, our terms expired. I'm just not, uh, you know, reapplying.
Okay.
And then there, uh, so there'll be Dave's seat to be filled, my seat to be filled, and presumably Mark's alternate seat to be filled.
Good.
So.
So that's three.
So that's three you need? Yeah. And you've got one right now? Yeah, one applicant that, yeah. So that's, uh, the other thing, I don't know whether, yeah, it will come up at the, um, planning session, but, uh, I'm, don't know how, like, schedule ended up. I'm not going to be in town for the planning session. So you're not?
No, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that because I've felt like it'd be in good hands.
I'd like to, I'd like to be there, but I'm not going to be here.
You know, I, I was already scheduled out, so, um, I don't know whether that impacts things. I'll leave that to staff to think about. I I don't mind my not being there because I'm not with the commission going forward anyway. Your leadership.
Is it just a workshop? Is there is can you, is there any capability to stream it or is that just totally? Just because it's not, it's a, is it, is it, is it a public function or is it just?
It's open to the public because.
Yes, it's got to be.
But it is a workshop. The way they did it last year, they went through all the topics and didn't allow public comment until the end. That way they could get through everything.
Yes.
I don't know if that's how they're going to do it again this year. It's something that I would recommend because it did work well last year.
You'd recommend streaming?
That would be up to the mayor and Kelly as the clerk. And, you know, because once you just, streaming is not a big issue, but
The public.
Is it then going to be interactive for members that can't be there? That's where the question would lie.
Okay.
You know, given you're you're the historian among us right now, so for you, forget what's happening going forward, and there's going to be a lot of topics that you're going to have a lot of background and knowledge of in this workshop that's going to be valued. So if you could.
If it were.
Do it from elsewhere, I don't know.
I I would be available from elsewhere, but, you know, during COVID, we used this microphone and it was just without having video participation, it was as good as not being there. It really, you felt always two beats behind. There'd be a discussion and then you'd kind of say, may I add something? You know, it's.
Yeah.
And it's hard to get these things scheduled. That's the problem. This was originally supposed to be in October.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know. I don't know the answer. I'll leave it to staff. They talk to commission a lot and if they have any thoughts. But I could participate from a distance. So, you know, one thing that has apparently been kicked around because at least one commissioner has brought this up is that an idea that staff could review most applications and if there weren't any staff questions that are concerns, that those would not come to planning and zoning for review anymore. I I strongly think that that's a bad idea. And I'll give you just one simple example. Our landscape code is very minimal and in need of being updated. Why do we get good landscaping? Well, you get good landscaping because homeowners and want to have good landscaping. But they also know the criteria that they've got to be approved here before planning and zoning. And so they do a good job because they have to come before us. There, you can't strictly use code and staff time as the only review on these projects. And we have wonderful staff, but they they review to a checklist. And I I really appreciate that staff has been adding to each of these applications our criteria of review. And the criteria of review are objective within guidelines, but subjective under those, and it gives us some latitude. And it gives us latitude to congeal, which is what I I think we have three choices on applications. We can approve, defer, or deny. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know that we've ever denied one. But we've deferred a number and had them come back a month or two later with some improvements. They always, if we denied, they always have appeals rights to the commission. I'm proud that nobody's ever appealed because that sounds like we're doing our job and getting things. In the end, everybody that comes before you has a vested interest in that project and that project alone. Our role is look for the good of the community and the good and look out and be the voice of the neighbor. The neighbor that may be at work this morning and can't be here at nine o'clock, but it's going to have a flat facade against the side of his house if we hadn't changed that code. And I I think it's an important role. And I'm very proud of the two of you to be commissioners, and I hope you're on this commission for a long time.
Well, another example I picked up on, Rick, is on these tight sites, you know, you've really looked at how the off-street parking, on-street parking is going to be dealt with and getting them to move a little bit such that they can get two cars perhaps instead of the one on the side. So, yeah, that wouldn't happen, I guess, without this this board.
We're here and we see these things and, you know, you know, we we saw that last application on Sailfish that had the and, you know, it's built to the code. Now, hopefully, he'll do what we asked him to do. But, you know, there did, we really need to have some looking at that Ocean View overlay area in Sailfish for the public safety purposes and just for the convenience of the neighbors, you know, it's it's going to be. Those are tight streets, one one way in, one way out. And so this is important. I suspect coming before you sometime will be this proposed, the teardown of the condo building and the replacement up here on the ocean, North of Ocean Club. That's an important project. And, you know, your your input on that project will make a difference to this town. I was on the commission before we had authority to turn a project down. And we would review projects on an advisory basis. Corey was here and the applicant could come in here and stand there and nod and say, yes, that's a good idea and walk out the door and do whatever he wanted as long as it met the minimums of the building code. So, you know, fight hard to keep that review authority here. It was took a lot of work to to get that and give this commission some clout with the applicants. So.
Rick, and I appreciate what Mark said, too, in terms of these tight lots. The house next to me on Island Drive has five cars in the in the in the driveway every night and a six car on the road two to three nights a week, staying on the road the whole night, which I think is not allowed, by the way.
It's not. It's not allowed. And you used to get ticketed for that.
You used to get ticketed. They seem like they said something that I talked to the chief a couple of months ago. But just to see five cars crowded into a, which should be two cars. And of course, their garage, as you said, is full of stuff. And so I won't say junk, but full of stuff. And you know what? It's just, and to see it every day is kind of to look at and go, it just, it just feels, it just, I'm like, wow, it just, that's not what we're all about, right? So that I'm I'm living with it every single day. And it's just, it just is, I'm just like, wow, you know? And to see five cars crammed into a little driveway and only a three bedroom house.
Airbnb?
No, it's not Airbnb, but it's it's a three bedroom house. Man, I'm like, oh, my God.
That that surprises me on the three bedrooms, but it doesn't surprise me that in a wealthy neighborhood, people have multiple vehicles. I mean, they're just, they're going to have their, you know, I have a neighbor, he's he's got a Jeep they use when they want to do that and a couple SUVs and and then, but they don't use the garage. It's the same thing. And and first thing in the morning, they don't park on the street, but first thing in the morning, one of the cars is out on the street and parked. You know, get so they can open up the driveway.
Just to, you know, I get it for you, service vehicles park on the street. I get all that, but just, I'm with you. It's just to me, it's especially these little roads like Sailfish. I mean, you 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 pull out in the middle, first thing in the morning, put it parked on the street. Well, how does the garbage truck get by? How does everything happen, right?
I think I think we almost have to review view garages the way how homes in the Northview basements, their storage facilities. If you want to use your garage to store your spare car, that's okay, but most. So then we need enough off-street parking for what's needed. We closed some things over the last few years. We, anything that looks like a bedroom in the house, I think, even if it doesn't have a closet, we call a bedroom because our parking requirements are based on bedrooms. So it's one per bedroom, right, Corey?
Yes.
Okay. But if it's a five bedroom house and they have count two of them in the garage, but they don't use the garage, you've got your neighbor problem and it meets code. And yeah, and your neighbor problem with three, he was only required to do three. He only needed one off-street parking space beyond the garage. Yes. And, yeah, I I think that could be looked at again. And if that means that houses have to be a little smaller on the lot.
Maybe maybe you were up in the first meeting I was in with you, and I I certainly understand it. And it's just, it's it 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 detracts from the the overall community, in my view, right?
Yeah.
We have people, friends come in or relatives come in town here and there. We get all that, right? That's part of life, but not on a not on a continuous basis, right?
But there's there's a tendency right now to to build to the max. I've seen, used to be four bedroom houses. Now we're seeing an awful lot of five bedroom houses. You know, the one we just reviewed, he's my neighbor, him and his wife live there. And they're and they're going to, they're going to live on the first floor. The second floor was built because they could.
Well, you want to achieve the value.
Yeah, but it's, you know, that's so, and that's fine as long as it doesn't have other detrimental.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
And that's 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 what it is. Well, it's, I I love being on this, and the reason I'm on some other boards that are a lot more work than this because we have a wonderful staff here and they make it so that it's all teed up for us to come in and do our part because they've done their part first, and it's much appreciated. So. Thank you, and I've said my piece at least for this month. Okay, we have a.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you. You two are great. Appreciate it.